Good evening, welcome to the KELTS meeting of August 19. Anyone in the audience can amplify his phone, please raise your hand and we'll bring those to you. Not seen any, let's put a price for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the citizens of it. For this stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberate from its own problems.
Thomas, we do roll call.
Thank you. Councilmember West.
Here.
Councilmember Jerry.
Here.
Councilmember Delmar.
Here.
Mayor Tusk.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Sat.
Here.
And Councilmember Conyers.
Here.
Thank you, Donna. Does the council have any late changes to the agenda? Not seen, city manager?
Yes.
All right. The council have any board reports to share? Right. Is there a motion to approve or consent agenda as published?
Mr. Mayor, move to approve the consent agenda as published.
All right, we have a motion to second to approve the consent agenda as published. All in favor say hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. The council invites the public to make comments on matters of city business. Comments shall be made to the entire council not until council members. Please refrain from making personal disrespectful remarks that created disruption to the meeting. Unreasonable destructive conduct continues to be asked to leave the meeting. Donna, who was at the public comment?
Yes, we just missed the mayor. Our first speaker is Annie Havens.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers for your dedicated services for allowing me to speak. My name is Annie Havens and I serve with the Youth Connection. I work primarily in Belafair while also supporting our Shell team. Our mission is simple but urgent, giving a part in solution to youth homelessness by removing barriers that keep our young people from stability. Nationally, one in 10 young adults and one in thirty youth experience some form of homelessness. These numbers are staggering and they reflect that we always take every day here home. This month, we opened our first youth transitional housing home with three units. Our remodel project over in 12 transitional housing units providing local safe spaces for youth without family support or stable housing to learn my skills, build stability, and grow in contributing members of our community. Alongside this project, we are opening a coffee cafe and expanding our drop-in center with new programs. In July, our centers welcomed 463 visitors across Shelton and Belafair. We have six, served 460, 645 pop lunches, handing out 45 food bags, and connected outreach to homeless individuals throughout Mason County. Our outcomes show a real impact. In 2024, eighty-six percent of our participants successfully exited into permanent housing, a number that continues to rise in 2025. To complete our housing project, we are applying for additional funding. While our support from the city is requested in that process, we need to acknowledge your partnership. Youth Connection is committed to being a part of the solution. With your continued support, we can bring this critical resource across the change line and ensure our youth have a safe path forward. Thank you for your time and for standing with us in this court.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dean Jewitt.
Good afternoon. We got a state of show address here. So, you know, Clint Eastwood, The Good, The Bad, The Other, great movie, should watch it. Hi. There's a, on the good side here, there was a squatter up by the Shelton outfitters. I called it in, I know that other city council people have called it in, it's gone. So code enforcement did what they needed to do, it's very much appreciated, thank you. Brewer Park, we got a lot of stuff out of Brewer Park, we'll touch on that when we come to the bad. I've noticed some cleanup that's been going on, some sidewalks, some of the cement islands, things like that. So there's some cement being put in there, obviously much appreciated. You know, we don't have curbs that are painted, we got sidewalks that are upheaval. We've got grass that's growing up and around, I mean, I'm not sure if we need to have a weeded brigade and do some volunteering and coming to town, I'd definitely be up for that, I bet Yerry would too. Brewer Park, we get it all cleaned out and then we kind of let it go backwards a bit. Then we clean it out and we let it go backwards. Let's stick on it, stay on it, and make sure that we're doing the same all over town. There's ordinances that we pass for no street camping. There's a car that's been parked down there by the watchtower right now, that's been there for almost a week. Mark and Henrietta got their Dodge Ram van that flows all over the town. There's the Jamboree Class BRV. If I know those, you guys know those, code enforcements knows those. Let's do something about it and enforce the ordinances that are on the books. When people get tossed out of Brewer Park, they end up over in Post Office Park. It's a whackable thing. Let's get those people towards services and get them out of the downtown area that it's a negative impact in. I just had to deal over about a half hour last night of a guy in our dumpster. And when I say a guy in our dumpster, I mean literally in the dumpster for a half hour. So, and then when he left, a police officer showed up, he left, made a big mess as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Clan Jacobs.
Good evening, everybody, my name is Clan Jacobs, I did do about 28 years. I retired from three different jobs. I'm seventy-three years of age. I do lots of training, training is my specialty. Right now, doing a lot of stuff for the Pentagon and other private groups and stuff like that. I live here and the time I lived here, I've never had any problems. I donate a lot of my skills and my techniques. I'm at broader magazine, I've been in the U R Army, got that several years. U B A kickboxing champion, best student in the World of Aquatic Boxing Championship. Lots of different type of trainings, British, Italian, and French Special Forces, etc. An individual moved in actually recently, a couple of years ago, five, six years ago, not by trouble. I talked to Mr. Ziegler, he didn't respond. But then the individual got even worse when she attempted to spit at me and I had to water her. I'm not gonna call that. I called Mr. Onasco. He said he's gonna call me back, he said, yes, speak to the chief of the police. I don't know the process, I don't know everything, I don't know planes, so I don't know everything. How do I have a master's degree in administration of criminal justice? But I know that lady, I'm six-three of this year, just because I'm cleaning up the weeds right by the mailbox, she called the police line, saying I'm on the property. Crystal across the from the street, Kenny's not on your property. She got upset because the police didn't come out to tell the fact it is, they had a lot of situation going on. So I waited until nine o'clock when they came out, because she jumped in my car. I didn't see her coming down towards me, she nearly hit me, intentionally. If I get a lot of electric in it, they're gonna hit me. If I see them coming towards me, I think maybe that's a good second. And we know how it turned out to be, we have a serious incident in Shelton. And I'm not running, I'm not owning place. I could justify my action if it's reasonable or necessarily. But this is why I escalate, I've asked for somebody to come out, nobody come out to tell me about these codes. Mr. Ziegler, I may have talked, I don't have nothing against him, I think he's a nice guy. And he says he goes to talk to Sean, I don't hear anything from Sean. I don't hear anything from the codes individual. If I'm doing something wrong, I need to know what I'm doing wrong. Again, I don't want to have problems. I live here for years, I donated a lot of my time with the wrestling team when Coach was living and recently passed away, because I used to wrestle, yes. And, um, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes.
That is all for in-person, we have one person on Zoom and that is Colleen Carmichael.
Good evening, Mayor Nesto.
Good evening, Mayor Nesto.
Deputy Mayor Sherman and fellow councilmembers. I'm Colleen Carmichael, Executive Director of New Horizon Communities. What is it about our society and the need to get the homeless out of our sight? As soon as they set up a camp, we call to have them removed. We must destroy any evidence of their existence. We keep removing them because we know that most people will go along with our justification that homeless people are immoral, unsafe, dirty, and undeserving of our help because after all, they chose that life. How did they choose? The chronically homeless person was forced to endure unspeakable abuse at the hands of someone they trusted and loved and chose to numb the horror they live with every day. The newly homeless person chose to have a car for their job instead of having a home for their family because they couldn't afford both. The domestic violence victim chose to escape brutality with nothing but the clothes on their back because they might die if they stay another day. The minor chose to come out only to have their family reject them. Those are the people who have made bad choices. There's only one problem with this logic, it hides the truth. The truth is seeing homeless people is a daily reminder of our failure to care about fellow human beings. Homeless people are not the guilty ones, the community that ignores them is. One belief that makes our country great is all men are equal. Our Declaration of Independence states everybody deserves the right to life and pursuit of happiness. Our Pledge of Allegiance says liberty and justice for all. Our National Anthem says we are the land of the free and the home of the brave. Our Statue of Liberty welcomes the tired, the poor who yearn to be free, and the homeless who faced many storms to seek a better life. We have come before city and county officials time and again with facts, data, stories, and evidence showing housing services work. We have explained the detrimental costs, both economic and social, of leaving people on the streets. We have presented to almost every social club, church, and agency in this county. Many citizens have chosen to stay silent even though they know what's happening is wrong. Well, I refuse to be silent. I believe in the goodness of humanity. I believe that my father, brother, uncles, and all veterans did not risk their lives in vain. We may walk different faith paths, but I beg you to act on the universal message of love, the commandment to honor your neighbor as yourself, and the call to light the lamp others can see. We ask you to stand for right versus wrong and do something to help people on the streets. You may say one person can't make a difference. Tell that to Anne Frank, Rosa Parks, Caesar Chavez, Chief Joseph, Harvey Milk, Susan B. Anthony, and Nelson Mandela. So what will it be? Will you continue to make bad choices or will you choose to help those less fortunate than you? Thank you.
Thank you. Right, we're on to our presentation, our first presentation is a historical society, it's a director of the O R R has museum second quarter L P report. That's cool.
Hello, thank you for taking the time to speak. Oh, quite happy last quarter, so we can hold a sharing. Our first slide is the is croquet and wood support on Oscar Hall's property, this is nineteen oh one. Fun part of this, I know I said this before, so I get to find it to be curious for the final parts. So, next slide, please. So for the second quarter, we had a total of seven hundred and thirty-nine visitors from fourteen counties and Washington State, from thirteen states across the country, and from Iceland and from Austria. So are actually our international boundaries down, but that's to be expected, we're at stake. We responded through email, Facebook, to fifty-one people, almost as many phone calls as we got, which, you know, we don't. The fifty-one doesn't include, you know, people trying to help me by Google page, but, and then we're also opposed for feedback installation, which is, thank you again. But, so, second quarter, we were up fourteen percent, so twenty-two and twelve percent. So, that's quite happy with that. Next slide, please.
Oh.
Excellent.
Yep.
Oh, sorry.
Working on it. There it goes.
Okay.
Probably will skip again because I did that a lot of times.
Well, I apologize for some of this, it is really not very clear. But we did have thirteen hundred, oops, I engaged myself, so there you go. We had, we were up forty-four percent for our interviews on Facebook, seventeen percent on our interactions, and we added a hundred and fifteen net followers, which is five hundred and thirty-nine percent increase from the previous order, which means this morning we'll probably put really that, but that's the way statistics work. Our, probably one of our more popular photos and most was a school picture from Belafair because, and I put a caption about how the kids look so happy and the teacher looks so nice and someone responded something, oh, it's a nice symbol. So, you know, appearances are deceptive. Next slide. So, on our, on our Google page, well, we don't have a Google page, but they look at our website. We have thirteen hundred active users on our website. Our most popular pages were, you know, to visit the museum, our membership in our store, and then the most popular product was our amplers, the search for the amplers, so it's available to be deep, which it continues to be fascinating to people. And then next slide, please. So, we have been, we were busy, we had a walk-in tour led by my friends. It was followed immediately by a tour of the Glendale House led by Pat Gates, had over sixteen people show up for that. We also brought out now updates. And I just want to comment too that the historical society has given all of the county and the reason for that, what this, we're just trying to get insurance. And, you know, people to drive them out of their cars instead or trucks, you know, with reliability. So, the county can take her that. We also participated in art blog, we had three artists. Next slide, please. This is one of my favorite photos of our collection, I just love this. So these kids are the Summers kids from Great View. This is our next exhibit pool, about the Mason County's wine heritage and Mason County had the first bond in one year maybe in the state of Washington, nineteen thirty. They had been making juice for a long time and who knows what else during television, but it's been a good issue, so they got, they got their, the bond for the wine. So, that is my presentation, our city capital's juice.
Any questions? Thank you very much. Our next presentation is the June financial status report.
Thank you, Mayor. Deputy Mayor, Council. While Mark brings the June report, I thought I'd give you a little update on our investment accounts and our local government investment pool account is currently at eighteen point eight million. In July, I invested five hundred thousand into LGIP and it's currently earning a four point three nine percent. And year to date, it's currently at four point four. The US Bank investment count, we have currently six point five million. And in September, we are going to have two bonded investments come to maturity, which is a good thing because they're at a very low yield rates. They have one for four hundred thousand coming due, which is at point five-two percent. And the second one is another four hundred thousand at point four zero percent. So, pretty low, those were purchased back in twenty twenty when bond rates were really low as well as the LGIP does have interest. So, when those mature, I will either reinvest those into the bonds or I will move into LGIP, where it's earning that four point three nine interest. But again, the beds are expected to lower the rates, so it'll be watching scene. So on to our June financial report. So, this is representing half of the year, six months of the year, which gives us better data to go on and gives us better assumptions and is still working at a conservative approach. Well, at least not losing. So, as you can see, the variance is a favorable, favorable variance of almost five thousand, which if you remember for the twenty twenty-five budget, we had budgeted one point one million more than what we were expecting revenues to come in. So, this just, this positive variance just drops that estimated actual down to two hundred and fifty-two thousand. So it is better, but again, we are coming on the summer months, so we're still being conservative with these numbers.
Is some of that because of the oppositions that we have in city?
Some of it, but it's, a lot is coming with, again, we're at six months, so we have better numbers coming in that we can, you know, review from what was it last year or to this year, what are the months doing? So, you know, and I'll go into that a little bit more in the revenue part. So on to page two. So we have the revenue, the general fund revenues. So the property taxes, we're keeping at what it was budgeted at. Sales tax is is getting a little better, it's still coming in a little under, but it's getting better than it has in the previous months. So, but it's still staying, staying a conservative approach with that one. The CD utility taxes are coming in strong and the business and occupation taxes. I did increase that one about fifty thousand dollars of what we were anticipating in getting originally. Again, all of these revenue numbers, we did adjust them because we have actual numbers for six months to go. It's easier to do it as we get more into the year than it is to, that we are in the beginning, so. And on page three, we have our general fund overview of expenditures. They're falling in line, they're falling under budget currently, but just helping with that estimated actual, bringing that down as well as increase revenues. So page four and five, the year to date for general fund and the month-to-month general fund, just see how we've progressed from from last month and then last year for at least twenty-three and twenty-four, three, five years. On page six, we have our sales tax breakdown for revenue and these numbers come from the Department of Revenue for the twenty twenty-five through June and then June twenty twenty-five, so the numbers are they're staying in line with each other, so there's no concern with this. Page seven is our citywide fund balances. This just tells you where each fund is expected to be through twenty twenty-five. And then at the bottom of the page is where we have vacancies for all of our FTEs. And currently, we have four and a half in the general fund and four in the utility funds. So, the two are that we increased from last month are the two that were and if I, if I could take this time to say thank you to the finance staff for, you know, staying in it. It's, you know, it's been, it's been tough, but it's, you know, we stayed strong. And I really appreciate the work that they have done and the work that they do is outstanding. And again, they, they're the ones that are doing these reports, so I think we and tomorrow, so we can make decisions going forward with budget.
You as well, you picked up a lot of responsibility after Mike, so moving on, so thank you also.
What a great job.
Thank you. Then back to page eight, nine, nine as well. There's just all the citywide overview of revenue and expenditures. And just keep in mind that we, even though this is June, we're at the end of, almost at the end of August, because don't rush the summer. But, but because of construction costs and all of our projects that we're doing, you know, they'll be reflected in those coming months to bring to you in these, so. But we'll still be coming in as well for under the expenditure. With that, is there any other questions?
Any questions? I did notice the permit fees and sales taxes are, or some of that's coming up because of the development, isn't it?
Yeah. It's the construction season, tends to wrap up after the first of the year. As you know, it's, the sales tax is always on a two-month lag as well. So, we'll see that after the fact, so December sales tax from twenty twenty four, you see the February twenty twenty five, so. It's always, it's always increases during construction season. We'll see more of it as we get future investments, particularly in some of the subdivisions that they're, they're moving dirt and going through the land use processes now.
Sounds great, well, it's looking a little bit better than it did last year. So hopefully things continue on at this pace and maybe we, you know, a little further down the road than we gotta worry about twenty-eight maybe instead of twenty-seven, so.
As you know, we're budgeting conservatively, we're budgeting conservatively on the expenditure side as well as revenue side and that's purposeful, that's purposeful so we don't have to go back and make negative corrections, make some positive corrections and affect some one-time purchases, one-time costs in the future, so. Partly due to the due diligence of our staff too, our departments are mining their budget, they're, they're keeping an eye on it on a regular basis, we're getting great information from the finance team, so we maintain our budgets appropriately, if we don't have the information, you know, if you will, it's almost shot of dark, right? Because it's ever-changing, so I really appreciate our, all of our staff maintaining their budgets and keeping it in balance.
Thank you, Terry, being at Marden. Now we have one more presentation from Judge Greer, municipal court.
Wherever you're comfortable, Judge.
Only a check.
Behind it.
Up there.
Defense or it's prosecution, there.
So first of all, I want to thank uh, Aran Espo, Chairman, City Council, uh, for pointing out the court's once-year report. And for those after me, I'll try not to speak too long. There's some comments along the way, uh, first of all, you are an apartment, and this is the court area building. And just want to point out, this is the staff that we have. And part of like to point out is the staff of the court is very loyal. And you can tell along most of them have been here. And that is a plus. As training somebody takes a lot of time, a lot of energy, a lot of money. And so the fact that we lose employees to court, I see as a very positive thing for the court. And I have a few notes, uh, that may go along the way, so I'll try to be expedient for you. The court staff let all other state employees get jobs very seriously. Great job, whether it's patching a road or fixing a pipe or here in court. For us, public safety is number one. And reducing recidivism, there's no repeat criminal behavior is part of our goal as well. We see ourselves as a public service. The people that walk through this door uh, as to come in or appear by this video screen in the squally jail or Mason County Jail, most of them have little to no criminal history. I know here are a lot of comments that public meetings, and I say nothing, because I'm a different branch of government. I just listen. And so I do come to these meetings, I do listen, I want to know what public thinks, I want to know what you think, whatever's saying in the public is very important for court. Know what you think, what you want, what you need. And we do absorb that information silently, so we're not allowed to talk about it. But I want you to know that most people that come through that door, who am I right? Are first-time offenders or maybe second-time offenders. We have a few that come by every single weekend, you know who they are. But most are not in that category. They're all presumed innocent by the court, all treated with respect. Uh, some of them are terrified when they come to court. Whether they're on that video screen crying or whether in the courtroom shaking. And how we treat them when they come in reflects on the whole city. It could be the only contact you ever have to see. That traffic ticket, that, that Walmart driving with suspended license. How they're treated and how that case works out, good or bad, as long as it's with respect reflects on the whole city. Most people never come to the city building, except maybe to pay for utilities. Or come to a county building, unless you get a various license or they got a court case. Otherwise, they never come, majority of people never walk in here. And that's actually a good thing. So when they do, it's very, very important from our perspective that it's a positive experience, even if they go to jail, as long as it's respectful, that's what matters. Everybody has a different outcome, and some have agreements with the prosecutor, some do community service work, some go to jail. It just depends on many factors. Court has admission statement, I hate presentations where somebody just reads to you what's on the screen. So there it is, uh, and one of mine is we follow the law. And ultimately, my boss is the State Supreme Court of Washington. Uh, that's who I'm ultimately responsible to. I'd like to touch on the lower paragraph. Eighty-seven point five percent of all the criminal cases in the state of Washington are done by the district court and the city courts of Washington. The remainder in superior court criminal cases, superior court has other things that we don't do. Probate, states, civil lawsuits, et cetera, et cetera. But the majority of people commit offenses already lowered to court, so state of Washington, this is one of them. People like numbers? So I, I asked Diane my, in this manner, maybe cover your chart, so. In twenty twenty-four, we had four thousand twenty hearings in this room. Six hundred thirty-nine citations, eighty-nine, ninety-two violations. Those are controlled by law enforcement. Chief behind me is officer, officers write those, uh, sometimes a prosecutor will file something, those are much more rare. My note that I made is violations have increased in twenty twenty-five, our website counters have grown about twenty percent this year over last year. Haven't got those numbers yet, but the average counter in the morning is just shy of a hundred cases. Just be around sixty-five, seventy. So there's an increase in filings. The court process, this is kind of a list of what we do, uh, gross misdemeanors, just want to give you examples, like D B assaults, Q I's, thefts, uh, the main theft victims are, well, all our local businesses, but the general Walmart, Seaway are the two biggest uh, for theft in the city. The misdemeanors are things like somebody driving without a valid license, without I D. Most trespasses, so they trespass upon your business, your front yard. Those are misdemeanors, misdemeanors, probably nine days in jail, a thousand dollar fine. Gross misdemeanors are three to sixty-four days in jail, five thousand dollars, those are hostiles. Traffic infractions uh, are usually speeding, usually connected to a criminal case of some kind. Ham control violations, we have very few. Health code violations also very, very few. And city code violations are usually, but not always, uh, camp in prohibited locations is the most common citation from law enforcement. Tow hearings, we've had one this year so far. I believe that will as a banned use for potentially illegal activity that was parked somewhere and shouldn't be. We do many other things uh, with customer service, public records requests, uh, awesome deposit becomes law enforcement, internet data and state peer system. Believe it or not, bankruptcies, collections and bail have to do with the same court as well. We cannot collect fines from somebody that goes into bankruptcy, so yeah, we track that, we're in trouble with federal court. Uh, we have a collection agency we go to, for people don't pay their fines when we deal with bail issues. I'll skip ahead. This is Sheldon Creek. My comment is, left-hand picture, you can't see it. Right-hand picture, after a work crew of city defendants and Jerry Tins charged up that crew, you can now see the Sheldon Creek. Watercraft in particular grows in that. Um, thanks to the people upstairs in the administration. Uh, we get, it's like five-year permits, we corrected my wrong, from Fisher Wildlife, the current one expires in twenty twenty-eighth. In between July fifteenth, September fifteen, they can go into a creek and clean it out. That has great benefits, the fish and wildlife also helps reduce flooding. Uh, when we have rainy periods, especially when you get towards the mill, I know a lot, and so cleaning it out helps reduce flooding. Our next picture is this, for and after, the top one is a homeless camp. I would know that public works, uh, is great assistance to the cleanup crews, uh, to that garbage hasn't pulled away. We have a trailer that attaches to the van, it won't take so much. Uh, co-enforcement's also heavily involved. First team forward, my on the mission to write, I believe is my employee. Uh, I keep telling her she's a supervisor, and she works harder than some of the defendants. That's what she likes to do, lead by example. Uh, the lower picture, I'll be honest, I can't remember which section it is. He's giving one at roundabouts, I'm gonna check it, but couldn't really see the sidewalk, it was very slippery, very dangerous, overgrown. And this one of things crew cleaned up. And I did write down, it's okay, for the last slide, six hundred ninety-eight hours community service work was done. That replaced eighty-seven days in jail that we're not paying for. And the rates in the squally is twelve thousand forty, twenty-one dollars, we just can't tell what cost that was. And that money that was not paid, but also gave that to the committee by cleanup garbage. It was, it was a treatment court, uh, I dropped it out of notes, uh, there were presentations today that came from Youth Connection. Because I've dealt with them today, just don't know it, same here, but in our treatment court, we have two pregnant, like Youth Connections, that's tomorrow afternoon is picking one up from the jail and giving her a housing. And helping her get to her treatments and move forward in her life. She was living in a car next door to Mason County District Court. I guess it'd be a little bit of a car, the next to building with a camera. But um, she was using fentanyl, methamphetamine, and now she's a veteran. That's a very dangerous combination, using drugs. Fortunately, by habitual stance, I put her in jail. She's in a treatment court, she tested positive, violation, jail in medical, early stage fantasy. Some damage needed that done. But now she's clean and sober. She's been through some treatment, back to the jail, she is homeless. You can't see her home tomorrow, that's it. And so we greatly appreciate their services, that matter. Another fortunate moment is I already gave birth, and she is also in a medical type shelter in Pierce County. So regards to our treatment court, we started in twenty twenty-two. And twenty twenty-four, like I say, our court got a warrant, I got a warrant, but it's a team, so we got a warrant uh, for innovation justice in the state court system. The city should be proud of their treatment court, I know we are. We are one of a kind in the state. Because I was told we couldn't do it, so therefore we had to. And I mean, that's a personality problem, but most courts are drug courts. Mental health court, professional court, or family court, family courts, so yeah, it's all. And it's not really their fault, they're divided up that way, has to do with federal funding. That choice has been taken from them, you get a pile of money from the county, the federal government mixed, federal government says you only use it for this, you only use it for this. And their hands are tied. So our funds for treatment court come a hundred percent in state court system. No strings. We just have to follow the professional guidelines for treatment courts. So we took the professional guidelines and subsused disorder court, but the guidelines for mental health court, there's now a pocket called hero health court, but are no guidelines for community court by the way. And we combined all them together. We then, instead of treating everybody as such a regular, I can just mentally help, which ignores reality, uh, do you see both? We have a partner named Casao, which is just a few blocks away, uh, they're bilingual services, which is very important. And everybody gets an evaluation with the health department, psychiatric R and P, and a substance use disorder professional. And then we interview them, risk management tools, and figure out what they need. Housing, food, driver's license and insurance. Surprise, many people find out that insurance or licenses. And so we ask them what they need, we then offer them the services that fits their issue. The goal is, we don't want to come back to the court and do another crime. We don't want some of these people whose program that we have, you know, are domestic violence innocent. We don't want them driving through neighbor's fence and then crashing into somebody. These are actual cases, uh, we don't want them running through law enforcement, by the boss's hammer, and vomiting all over the same property, block fighting. Uh, we're trying to have that eager, not repeated side. It is done well, uh, we operate in five languages, usually three, but up to five. Fifteen participants at a time and reduce crime rate, right? That's the goal, so in United States as a whole. Treatment courts, particularly drug courts, so we want to combine stats on reduce new crimes by the members, twelve to thirty percent, that's not that great. At best, some drug courts are fifty to eighty percent reduction in crime. That's a huge gap, that's the numbers they have out there. The Sheldon's Old Court, I think it's because we combine everything. We have ninety, I listed numbers today, we have ninety-five percent success rate versus recidivism. That is really close. Now, we only have two years of bachelor's post-graduation, and also academic and criminal justice, so three years is the gold standard, so you got twelve months to go through. Uh, I personally think five years is a better standard, but we'll keep the statistics and see how it goes. Our graduation rate nationally for treatment courses, fifty-seven percent, our graduation rate is eighty. Uh, twenty percent either back out of the program, it's just, no, not ready, we're all dead. We did lose one person to an overdose stat. And was terminated by the court for not being cooperative, basically not looking at here. Uh, next, I have pictures of a couple of our graduates. And I purposely had myself cut out the pictures, didn't want to be there. But all the graduates get two graduation certificates, one in English, one in Spanish. If you're English speaker, you're French English one, and you can copy Spanish one for your facts. If you speak another language, you can write in Spanish one, in English, straight facts. Got to have some humor when they graduate. Now, some facts about jail cellies. The court has no control over where law enforcement puts someone in jail. But we do take notice of their costs. They spend jails for a three dollars a day, and current numbers turn around, so if that input is finding everybody. Squally jails, one forty-three, thirty-three, and courts, sixty-five, seventy-six. The court is aware that costs are important. We have to look at people's criminal history, public safety, what crimes before the court. But what happened to release them? And it's a calculation then, in about fifteen seconds, if you see somebody, or before I came here in two thousand nineteen, I did work from multiple courts, associate judge, working here in Arlington, A Harbor, Thurston County, City, yeah, kids out of county, here, this is a district court. They all have their practices, and it's good to know what they do. So I'll be blunt, I mean, Judge deals, and I'll listen to this later, so that's just the way it is. If Mason County District Court is going to hold somebody eight, ten thousand dollars a day, why should hold them here at all? Because we're both courts, I can protect them how late and they think what. That's how it works. They put our hearings inside their hearings, so we resolve our case, put ourselves theirs, and county picks up a little bit just sparing. So you do it all the time. I guess their hearings first, like the Gus, and decide, let somebody go, we will hold them, then we're holding that jail. But we hear a few arguments for, for, I gendered okay, and so it's not really a game, it's a calculation. Number one is public safety, always is. But if I can make the county pay the jail bill, you don't, the jail, but one. So we do that. Just, you know. The tribal monitoring coming to us, E H M, we do not do that right now, because we had a budget for that that was really, really small. And we put on one person who wants to come on and cut it off, you haven't paid for the bucks. Quite a terrible budget. Um, that really burned us, so learn from your mistakes, so there is money coming up. Um, A O C, state court system, we're small rural courts only, application deadlines nine twenty-six, I started the application already. Uh, they've advertised, what we said earlier today, they've advertised multiple times for court supplies, that tells me not very many are applying, so remain hopeful that we can get some of this money, and this will be an alternative to jail, it's post-convictional link. And it'll also be combined with any service. One of the benefits is if somebody has a job, you don't want them to lose that job, you just want to hold them accountable, right? And so this is a tool where you can do both at the same time. The court does consider these factors, so somebody's on social security or SNAP or something like that, they're in jail more than thirty days, they lose those benefits, they have to reapply. Translation, more likely to steal from the store, because they lost everything, instead of almost everything. You know, so those things are considered. The next section, I want to add that the court relies a lot on co-enforcement and public Relies a lot on code enforcement and public works. Every day. For our community service program. So I want to thank them here today for that. The court. Does everything they can legally to try to help out. The rest of the city as well. Our hands are tied on many things. But there's some things we try to do, help out. So my administrator is very adept. At the Office of Public Defense, Grand Affirmations. This is a past the court used to take care of both of us. Legally can't do that anymore, but she knows how to apply for the grant. And so if she does do that. Certainly there helps, emails go back and forth. Jump next please, turn around, how much money does guests and how much prosecutor get, so. Not me. Uh but we do everything we can. To fill all the forms and all the paperwork. Send it into Office of Public Defense, see if they'll give us some money, how we reverse. Public Defense Law. My administrator also views all the jail medical invoices, um three different jails, make sure they're correct. We find thousands of lawyers mistake usually in our favor. Occasionally in the county's favor, but they fall where they may, so usually in our favor, so they don't get overcharged. Finger printing is actually a law enforcement job. The way the law is written. Is the court made the fingerprint, and the defendant may be accused outright. Jail police shall fingerprint independent, not accused. Now, for some nights, it's happened for reasons, law enforcement does, but. So behind you is a hall, so fingerprinting station. Jerry tip, he serves fingerprint anyway, it's not going to jail. Cooperation is usually one percent. That is very important, because the state troll. Needs data, fingerprint, so people are arrested, they keep track of that in the city. You know, goes as a database, so if someone shows up somewhere else, they know who you are, they can find out what they've done, where many people can use multiple names. So it's helpful to have a fingerprinting system others. The next slide, uh just. Shows us what part of the budget we are for you. According to the budget wisdom, I mean. Yes. In summary, um and I was very low to bring this up. What I am, Judge Steele and I talk about this a lot. And Mary knows what I'm talking about, um. About every two, three years, the idea of the city court going away. Being run by a county goes. City councils change every couple of years in their demographics. And. So not really gonna harp on it, just wanna bring it to your attention. I know, um city courtroom, yeah. Is gone in February of this year. I also know that they have about eighty-three lawsuits coming down the pipe for that. And. That's what they get. I can let you know. I do the slightest of you to see a hundred and some numbers. In about a month, uh they show us being negative every year since we started our treatment part. That we're always thinking about it, we're actually not. Last state. Budget cycle, we got a hundred and eighteen. Thousand dollars for treatment. We spend it. We get reimbursed, it goes back to city general fund, which is totally fine until they open, they show up, they're sort of really weird. Or it looks like it's one of these things. We just got, and there are state cycles, so it's different. N of G, starting July first. So there's a massive city cycle. We got a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars starting July one, again, that money's gonna go out. Comes back, but back into city general fund, so it looks like group spending. More and more than we have, actually, it's state group spending. Not all city. As a municipal court, I come to most of your meetings, because it needs support in those parts of the city. I have family in the city, uh so it has the city very important to people. If things were going to a county, the state general. You lose control. Judge Steele, of course, made my cave of double, um you can both. Hospital, a lot. Judge Steele did a lot of work on this, he has some needs, but what, what, some dollars, maybe, city point. So that's very thousand dollars more. And don't know what else comes my way, instead of paying your prosecutor, the best attorney, I just have to go. You also lose, uh. The fact we're right here. While the law enforcement was searched for, they're right there, and it's walked over, yeah. Uh available twenty-four seven, I thought that would change, different person might answer. So, not in a negative manner, but this one is very important, especially if a budget talks about. We'll do our part. Anyway, you can tell them, okay. You just ask them to keep us in existence. I think you've got a good deal. If we went to the county, just inform me, you're a court, you're a court of U Hani. Please service me now. There's something called a fourteen minute. It's not a foul. Different treatment, different people. Can have a county court, subject to the treatment court, subject to that, subject to the community service. So those programs are both gone. Uh the treatment court money, please, one thousand five hundred dollars a month. Or two, three years ago. That's gone. Obviously, I think that would be very negative. On a positive note. The city council is very supportive of the court ever since I've been here, so we really appreciate it. The system that's currently recording us right now. The cameras. Sound system, I look at the mirrors, he's been here a long time, uh was because of you. You took a chance on court, you didn't get those dollars. If you're a fool, sorry, you're smart, I'm sure what it was, but it worked out. And it worked out for law enforcement, you say you really want, you can't buy something. You don't have to bring people back personally. It records, all your meetings, records all of it. Yeah, so I think it's a really good partnership. Want to continue a partnership, I think you're all going to enjoy listening to me, I won't bother you next session.
Questions? Can you touch just for a brief second on the. Bar Association recommendation that Supreme Court adopted of that? On how that's gonna affect, I know it's a ten-year deal, but immediately, how is that gonna affect us immediately?
Well, mine. And you could guess, is that your public defender's gonna want, use one more insurance. My guess, Barker do. Might invest in a better net, I'll talk about it or not.
Meaning, speak up, yeah.
It's about, so I'll, I'll tell you, uh. The county. Judge Steele, actually, I work on call for county, as presiding co-ten judge. Judge Steele and I are looking at, so see, my, of course, it needs, that was this, articles in the paper. The lack of public defenders in the county. We're looking at dismissing just. Will never be heard. We're talking to you eyes, as violence, press pass, you name it. There's gonna be a slew of, this is very dismissed. Because there's no public defender. As required by a concentration representative. Which is horrific, if, of course, you could prosecute to decide. What to prosecute, right? That's, he's like the official, he's gotta figure it out now. And this is a tough. But we're looking at dismissals. The one that happens to city, uh. The comments in the county court. Is if you hit a crime, the city get prosecuted by a county, might get prosecuted. And. I'd rather be in the jurisdiction when people get prosecuted, but you have to have both ends, prosecution, the answer doesn't happen. And so I am very worried. About the expense for defense. It's gonna escalate for the next ten years. There's a glimmer. Of hope. In that appellate court did roll, so Washington City's might not find it. That. Effectively is unfunded mandate. That the state Supreme Court. Is telling counties and cities to suck it up and pay more money for public defenders, but in the off, maybe, out in that endeavor. There's also dispute that in most states. Like Montana, Idaho, for example. Let's say you're size on a case of. They run public defense, it does beg a question why support system, create public defense, I'm told I can't. The Supreme Court about me says they don't. There's a contradiction in the law. And so those are now ruined. Because counties and cities, like where are you supposed to find this money? So shortage of lawyers. Lawyers do exist, and not do public service. Just not something you want to do. And so you have to compete in the open market. For these services. And it's. Not good. That's nonsense, I just not looking at it.
That's nail on the head, we're, we're now, um narrowing the market with a higher threshold, lower threshold, I guess, if you go. Cases are based on a point system, uh the high level pays, so at least for higher points and. Best attorney. Achieved, if you will, uh some points, I think for. We're in a decent position right now, we have, we have a public defender that has established firm. In Sheldon, these candidates for, for some time, he's built a. Built a team, uh but as the standards continue to progress, those points start, you know, start decreasing, uh. It's gonna ratch you down on small, small courts, small jurisdictions, like the state of Sheldon, so A W C has it on the radar. Uh I attended a webinar this week, I have a preliminary, um. Uh legislative, uh discussion, and certainly one of the priorities, A W C, to legislate. Uh in finding solutions for, for, as in Washington.
My depth of representatives due here, now I'm definitely. Yeah, though we tried to float it, yeah, last time it didn't fail, but. Uh for instance, teachers and doctors sometimes get. Someone there, just big debt, paid for. By the state, those sort of rural areas, areas of need. And. Whenever representatives try to get that movie. Or polygonates, right? From the rural area of need that's supposed to be in Seattle, Tacoma, my public. Debt. Getting that block, right? And that failed, but the pressure's building.
We've got some comments for the judge. Um first of all, I want to thank you for the innovation you've shown for the treatment court, and thank you for inviting me to the graduations. And I'm just really proud of the, the rate that people graduate and the rate that people stay out of jail. Um so thank you so much for the, for that. Um also, I want to thank you again for not just cost savings, but the labor savings of your fingerprinting and your jail bookings and all the things that you do for the city that are off the books. Um and just your concern for the public safety and making sure that. The order is correct and people are where they're supposed to be and how you're running things is just exemplary, and I really support the court being here in the city and. Especially their treatment court that is innovative, award-winning, and something that we should be following in the future, so. Um just kudos on your hard work and it's being seen and it's being recognized, and I hope that. That the city and the council takes that into consideration when we do go into budget negotiations in the future, but. Um you have a big supporter of the court, what you're doing, and your staff, um here on the council, so I just want to let you know that.
It's appreciated. This for you and the public, my, my children, imagine a living. In the city limits. So. That matters, to me, what happens in the city, a lot, too. It's great motivation, that's a professional and personal.
Any comments for the judge? I. I appreciate the support, Judge, and, and your work, and, and I think I started that conversation, and it's a legitimate conversation and, and a budget crunch, but. You know, if it's gonna cost more, obviously, that'll.
I know, I spoke to Mary, I was like, that's your hate.
You know, but, uh, don't, you know, it's a legitimate conversation and obviously, it's, it's not cost-effective and. But nothing to do with support, the court has done a wonderful job, your staff's a good job. That, um work crews do a wonderful job by seeing them out there on the roads. Climbing down. You know, forty foot and ditches and grabbing garbage, so it was, you know, just a conversation and, you know.
That's understood, and like you point out, that there's been several online claims, uh any defendants doing any work. The only claim we had was. Some employee. Who. Was shot at, uh by our D gun. And the individual that did that. It's a big assault. I'm Mr. Rossi for that. So many injuries can never happen.
Well, thank you, Your Honor, you guys do a wonderful job.
All right. Do you need a break, or Chief?
Yeah, I can tip.
Five, five?
Five, five-minute recess.
Thanks.
Great.
Great news.
Very.
May I put one more? Progressively. That's long ago. I mean, you know. Yeah, I'm. I think they're probably so, um, yeah, interesting. Something awesome, if you have a small. Gullif. Yes. It's. So you are afraid.
Thank you, Jason. No, you people.
No.
We are supposed to go down and bring back a minute.
Hello. Oh, okay, sorry.
All right, are we ready? Donna, are we ready?
Ready.
All right, welcome back. Our first business item is a contract board for secure plenty fencing project, Assistant Public Works Director Aaron Nick says and ready for it. Good evening, Aaron.
Good evening. Thank you, Aaron. Your fortune, uh, counsel. This is related to an action item that we're going to talk about here shortly. Um, we kind of. To let you know what this is department could have been talking on, uh, for months with regard to. Um, a secure fencing project over here for police folks, um, as well as, um, some security software. For fighting. We went out to bid, um, on August fifth and, um, did you notice on the last page there's a bit tabulation? The cost estimate for the project was approximately four hundred ninety one thousand dollars. Our little bid that we got for this project is three hundred ninety two, three thousand, one hundred and nine dollars. So almost a hundred thousand dollar savings. Um, I will tell you, I did a budget check today. We have adequate resources, like the grant. And the additional money that you guys budgeted in twenty twenty five, I don't only pay for this. Pay for the software, the hardware and the design work. So we are flush and we are just looking for the council to approve that at the next bill. To move forward with that project. I will tell you in preparation for that, we've done an extensive outreach. In the community, we sign off letters, we call the community that lives over there. We're also going to have message boards out probably tomorrow, maybe the next day, basically like that, and for construction. Um, and that fifth will no longer be open to anyone. Closed road, remember, it's identified by the, um, agenda bill or the. Staff report, uh, that was vacated, uh, a year or so ago, a little bit longer, probably more like two and a half years or so. Um, so that road, uh, is no longer a road, um, yeah. Looking, uh, hopefully to move forward with this here at your next meeting, next meeting. And you can set it up.
Thank you, Aaron. Donna, have you ever read a resolution number one, three, nine, three dash zero, seven, two, five?
Resolution number one, three, nine, three dash zero, seven, two, five. A resolution of the city of Sheldon, Washington, awarding the secure fencing project. Due to versatile time holdings from West L L C and authorizing the city manager to execute contract documents.
Thank you, Donna. Do I have a motion?
Mister Mayor, move to forward resolution number one, three, nine, three dash zero, seven, two, five to the. Action agenda at the September second, twenty twenty five council meeting for further consideration.
Second.
All right. We have a, oh, actually comments or questions?
Uh, with the long time coming, thank you for incorporating everything that we've asked for to increase security in the whole building. So thank you so much, um, for working this out and making it available and thank all of us for bringing it into budget and for moving this forward.
Yeah, thank you, Aaron. Um, it's a long time coming, as Melton Birdwood Terra says, um, and recap, this is really for the safety of our officers. So they can pull, come in and go without having to worry about somebody, you know, standing around a corner and, you know, absolutely. Talking to something.
Mister Mayor, to, to clarify, it'll also incorporate the, the eastern entrance exit for court staff as well as most comm staff is there here. As they are closely associated with, with the police department and our, and our public safety, um, public safety services. So, um, certainly a bad position individuals as well.
Do you have any questions? Right. We have a motion, thank you, Aaron. We have a motion in the second to forward resolution number one, three, nine, three dash zero, seven, two, five to the actual agenda September second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Host, motion carries. Thank you. Oh, Aaron's still up. Another item from Aaron.
Yes, um, maintenance related project. This has also been a long time coming, um, so we have, let's identify this U P S. Called it under, under, under power supply. And in essence, they'll, you'll see that on a smaller scale with computers. They will actually basically it's a battery backup in essence. And it will carry out, carry you through until you can get reliable power. We actually had an incident here, uh, two months ago where we lost power. It was not necessarily, it wasn't created by. P U D, it was an internal issue within our building that we needed to address. At that time, the power went out, the U P S did not do what it was supposed to do. The batteries that are candidly dead, they won't work. Problem with that is that if you transition power, there's some very sensitive equipment, specifically, I believe, nine, one, one got impacted by one of their servers. Because of that, it was that, that free transition of power and it basically blew that out. That's why you have these things. Um, in essence, we have a, an A T generator, um, it did kick off during that event. But what we noticed was it was hungry, difficult to get though. And it took about thirty seconds to hear it raining or her just trying to make up for the power that it needed. So. This is an important project, but I will tell you, council, it's suspense. I need just bottom line, uh, it is an expensive project. Um. So in essence, um, we had budgeted and I'm trying to remember, I believe it was eighty thousand dollars for this project. We did have to utilize, uh, architectural firms to help us with the design of that. Um, so we spent about fifteen thousand dollars on that. That leaves us with about sixty five thousand dollars against our project. The bid came in about, or excuse me, it wasn't a bid, we're very fortunate in this case in that the vendor. C D O is actually on the state roster. So that means we get the best prices for all, for these types of systems. It came in about a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. So there's a, there's a gap that we need to cover here. Um, in talking with the city manager, uh, and other staff. Uh, what we'd like to do is we'd like to proceed with this project with a caveat that we will be doing a supplemental budget. To cover the rest of the expense with this, but this is, when you're talking about emergency management, those kinds of things, this is one of those crucial things that you have to have. Because, well, for now, we have nine, one, one, but we also have our police department. Another interesting thing is I believe with a control device of skin is here too. So if that interrupts. All of our water systems, sewer systems can go to bump. So. This really is an important project, so please council consider that. But that is our desire is to move forward with this. Um, and actually go and get this done. It's basically broken into two parts. You'll see in your paperwork, obviously you have a resolution. But it is a purchase services contract, which in essence we're purchasing services. The P O that you see attached to it is the actual components to the system that we'll purchase. So. With that, happy to answer questions. Again, we do have a little bit of a shortfall here that we were hoping to cover by booting some, some kind of budget.
If necessary, yeah, at this point we'll fund it through the. Facilities budget, there's capacity within facilities budget now, most likely a supplemental budget will become that council before the end of the year. We need to supplement that facilities budget to, to this overall, that's what the council considered. Thank you.
Donna, have you ever read the resolution number one, three, nine, six dash zero, seven, two, five?
Resolution number one, three, nine, six dash zero, seven, two, five. A resolution of the city of Sheldon, Washington. Authorizing the city manager to enter into a purchase services agreement. Number two, five dash zero, one, five dash C S A and purchase order number. Twenty five dash zero, three, eight for services and materials and replacing the existing uninterrupted power supply of the civic center.
Thank you. We have a motion.
Mister Mayor, move to press resolution number one, three, nine, six dash zero, seven, two, five on the action agenda for the council meeting on September second, twenty twenty five for further consideration.
Thank you. Comments or questions?
Um, first of all, this is more than just a public safety issue. It's also an environmental issue and it's also. A pre emergency issue because we can't even activate nine, one, one if it's not going on. So this is beyond important. That we get this done and have an emergency for an emergency. So, um, I fully support this project and I fully support finding a way to get it paid for. And this is a service that we cannot to go without. So this is something that I, I will be voting for and would be moving forward and getting it as soon as possible. So that's my comment.
Just replacing the big old man sized generator back there?
Yes, sir. This is actually the, the U P S in this building is located, you know where the generators sit? Right, there it is. Uh, so it's.
Oh, yes.
Permit center and then you go through the hallway to go to finance. They're kind of off to the left there. Um, it sits back in there. One of the other issues that we have. Is a very complicated system. All I can tell you is that we're taking power and we're transferring it down to get lower, uh, juice, then we're ramping it back up. Three, two or three times in that throat, so it gets really hot. You're going to see a budget next year for us to put in one of those portable units. Because it gets that hot in there. We do the fan, um, but it's just not sufficient. So. That really is a critical area. It was kind of a, it was, it was kind of a good thing, can't believe that we did have a power outage. Is it, Mark and I really figure out where the main switches were and kind of go through that. There are going to be, we're going to be doing some additional work, you guys. A lot of our panels are not identified correctly, but we want to get that. You need to be able to turn off surface if we need to. So. That's something we're going to cover, cover in operations budget, but there are some things that we're continuing to look into. Again, it's upstairs. You'll see a big captain about that tall. That's the battery pack. The new one is going to be significantly smaller. They're using new battery technology, not the. Acid. But who does the generator that they're using for the?
That might be a nightcap system, yeah.
So, but so it's working with the generator we still have.
Yes, sir. That's the idea with the U P S, you guys, is if the power goes out. That thing takes the power and continues to keep it in action. The battery life, the batteries will last about fifteen minutes. That's more than sufficient time. Because we have a transfer switch as soon as the power goes out. It's supplying that, it can do it up to fifteen minutes, but within a minute our generator fires off. Okay. So it's that transition piece that helps us. Keep all of everything functioning as well as not killing service, which is a big thing.
Anything else? Right. We have a motion in the second to place roses number one, three, nine, six dash zero, seven, two, five on the actual agenda for the council meeting September second. All up there, say aye.
Aye.
Host, motion carries. Thank you, Aaron. All right, up next, our ordinance updating sections and this called Hode, city manager, Mark Stigler, has more question for.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. Um, tonight, uh, draft ordinance twenty thirty one, oh, seven, two, five has some recommended amendments and deletions within Sheldon municipal code. Uh, as we move through daily work here at the city of Sheldon and review our codes, uh, there's always some updates to, to address. First and foremost, uh, I'll reference two point one eight, which is, um. Titled city manager, within the city manager, um. Code section, there's, uh, several chapters about scope and authority, duties and power, salary, resignation and removal from office. Um, one thing, um, that wasn't necessarily, um, identified was signing authority. So signing authority has, has been done through policy resolution in the past. And as council knows, we've talked about. Uh, the limits of signing authority for the city manager, the thresholds to, to purchasing and procurement and how that's led to, um, some unnecessary redundancies, some inefficiencies. And so as, as we've talked, um, talked through. The ability to increase the city manager's signing authority to, to help alleviate some of those. So. Uh, chapter two point one eight would add a section for, um, city manager's signing authority. Um, currently the signing authority established by resolutions, thirty thousand dollars. Um, we have the matrix attached to this that would outline, uh, how the signing authority is, is delegated throughout the city, but also how. Uh, if a item is budgeted within, called out within the, uh, that, within his, and city's annual budget. Then it would designate signing authority for the management of floor purchases. Uh, there are things like vehicles, uh, that are over thirty thousand, sometimes over fifty thousand dollars, depending on the, on the piece of equipment. Uh, we would add those who go to consent agenda through three big tests, the council's fit. We certainly can bring those back in the council meeting for, for transparency and public information of the council. Again, so these fit, if it's an important piece of equipment, say a patch truck or a vector truck or, or, uh. Crack seal or something like that, we'll make an investment, uh, for our, uh, infrastructure improvements. We certainly can bring it back. Um, there's that, that's the community, so they understand the investments that we're making. So again, uh, two point one eight. Um, would add a delegated signing authority, um, to, um, award executed. Closeout contracts in amounts less than fifty thousand dollars. Um, this would also rescind, um, resolution eleven seventy, oh, eight, two, oh, which I'll talk about kind of next. Um, and then in chapter two point oh, six, um, this is really a. A chapter that is obsolete now about city departments is fairly redundant because it talks about. The various city departments establishing those, but we have a chapter within, uh, titled two. That identifies each, each city department anyway. So it's really redundant. It's from, let's see, nineteen ninety eight, it was updated in twenty eighteen. The only update was we went from commission to council formal government. And so you'll see throughout the municipal code, um, ordinance nineteen twenty one dash oh, five, one, eight from twenty eighteen. Was just. Changing, um, the language within the code from commission to council at the time that the formal government changed. Um, and then finally, uh. Chapter two point six, oh, oh, one, oh, um, authorizes the, uh, city manager to determine the office hours, city offices, probably determine available resources. Uh, right now, um, that is. Within the council's authority by R C W, you can delegate that authority. Um, but the office hours right now are Monday through Friday, eight AM to five PM within our code. It's obviously not accurate. We're all, we're operating. Monday through Friday, eight thirty AM to four thirty PM. Uh, we have had to make those, make those organizational and operational changes due to. Available resources, staffing and budget. So, uh, those changes have been made over time without necessarily updating one of our municipal codes. So I think it's appropriate. Uh, time to, um, bring this to council and, um, seek, uh, your, uh, your approval to, uh, determine. That the city manager will be authorized to make those changes, obviously with communication part to the council before.
You pushed two of those together?
No.
Wow. I thought we were on.
Just skip to, I skipped, well, I was really, I was really short on two point oh, six.
Okay.
And deleting section two point oh, six, because again, that is, that is a title that. That's titled, uh, city departments. And it's redundant, uh, to the, a number of other titles, including. Two point one six, which is municipal court, two point one eight, city manager, two, two, city attorney, city clerk, and therefore, and so on throughout the code.
Okay.
So you're referring to?
Well, you, we were talking about signing authority and that's, that was second my list. So I was confused if we like did two together.
Okay. Okay, two point oh, six, uh, repeal.
Well, I'm talking about ordinance number two, oh, two, oh, three, one, zero, seven, two, five.
Uh huh.
That's, that's what we were talking, we were talking.
Yeah, that, that's the ordinance number.
Okay.
That amends Sheldon municipal court code, sorry, two point oh, six, which is repealing two point oh, six.
Okay.
Amending two point one, eight, oh, four, oh, and so that's amending, adding oh, four, oh, and renumbering that adds the signing authority. And then amending two point six, oh, oh, one, oh. Which is the office hours, hours of operation. Sorry.
Okay.
Tried to, tried to lump a, a number of edits into, uh, into this ordinance.
I thought we were moving around here. I'm going, wait a minute, did we skip one? I thought we were moving around here, I'm going, wait a minute, did we skip one? All right, uh, do we have a motion?
Mister Mayor, I move to place ordinance, I'm sorry.
Oh, and commit Donovan reading of two oh, three, one, dash, zero, seven, maybe she's.
Try to straighten it out.
All right. Ordinance number two, zero, three, one, dash, zero, seven, two, five. An ordinance of the city of Sheldon, Washington, repealing chapter two point oh, six, adding a new section. Two point one, eight, point, zero, four, zero. Reordering sections two point. One, eight, point, zero, four, zero through point, zero, six, zero. And then new section two point six, zero, point, zero, one, zero of the Sheldon Municipal Code related to city manager authority.
Thank you, Donna, do we have a motion?
Mister Mayor, move to place ordinance number two, zero, three, one, dash, zero, seven, two, five on September second, twenty twenty five, action agenda for further consideration.
Comments or questions?
Excuse me, Mister Mayor.
Yes.
With the document.
Listen.
Thank you.
Comments or questions? All right, we have a motion in a second to place ordinance number two, oh, three, one, dash, zero, seven, two, five. September second, twenty twenty five, council action agenda for the consideration. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Now we're on Mark, another resolution from Mark about signing.
Correct.
That's what I thought we were, that we were talking about.
Yeah, separate, so um, back in uh, two thousand twenty, the council approved a resolution. Designating signing authority to the city manager uh not to exceed thirty thousand dollars at first. Uh, with the council's approval of the code amendments, um, just just previously considered this would, that would um. Make this resolution obsolete, so uh, resolution number one, three, nine, four, oh, seven, two, five. Just repeals the resolution from from twenty twenty that designated that thirty thousand dollars.
All right, Donna, may I read the resolution one, three, nine, four, dash, zero, seven, two, five?
Resolution number one, three, nine, four, dash, zero, seven, five. A resolution of the council of the city of Sheldon, Washington. Authorizing the repeal of resolution number one, one, seven, zero, dash, zero, eight, two, zero. Authorizing staff signing authority for contracts.
Thank you, Donna, do we have a motion?
Mister Mayor, move to place resolution number one, three, nine, four, dash, zero, seven, two, five on September second, twenty twenty five, action agenda for further consideration.
Comments or questions?
So our process, if we wanted to change this again, is go through the same steps that we just did. If we wanted to go to seventy five thousand in the future or.
In ordinance, we brought back to the council to amend the city code absolutely.
Okay, so it wouldn't be that difficult if all, or if we didn't like that you're doing all these forty nine thousand dollar things. We 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 can go back and put it down to thirty.
Yeah.
Correct.
Exactly right, and within within the within the matrix. That uh follows the the purchasing authority, there's thresholds for change orders. Um, grant applications as well, so um, change orders would be no more than ten percent of the original contract, so. Correct.
I just wanted to assure the council and everyone watching that um, this is gonna be easy to change if we don't like what the city manager is doing. So there is oversight, so it's okay to give up some of the council's power in this case. Because we're responsible for you and not the employees' hours. Right, that's how I see it, so that's how I want to go moving forward. And if you do need, if things change and the and rates continue to go up, we're gonna have to revisit this in the future anyway. So um, I I I would, I just wanted to make sure the process was clean and easy um either way.
This creates efficiency. If we didn't allow this, you had a forty nine thousand dollar. Change in a contract, they have to come here to us, a business item and an action item. So this creates efficiency for staff and having to write. They were just packing and it's gonna be on our consent agenda um as well, so there's nothing ever gonna be out of our sight. And we've got Terry up here making sure that everybody else on the up and up too, right? So. Sounds good, any other comments or questions? All right. We have a motion in a second, like the motion number one, three, nine, four, dash, zero, seven, two, five on September second, twenty twenty five, council action for the consideration. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. All right, we are requesting out of a regular meeting and opening a public hearing. Um, Jason. I guess I should have said ordinance, but an annexation request. Jason.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Um, this public hearings follows on to action, the council's already been wearing uh, getting adopted in a vessel. We're getting that green light and so to speak. Property or a two and a half acre piece of property located adjacent to city limits and our U G A. To uh officially apply for annexation. What that means is they would formally be. If we have city limits and uh assume the zoning the city has in its uh future name and use map, which is identical with the counties. Which this is a residentially zoned property, it's vacant, the truth says that. Um. This action does require a public hearing and it's provided that, you know, nothing unexpected comes up tonight. We are asking that you to uh. Make a first reading of the ordinance and on your uh. Action agenda of September second evening. And. I believe in that. Any questions for me? Or you're making a meeting public?
I was able to test the volume.
Man, we're all your questions answered by Jason earlier.
Oh, I did. Same thing, I did speak a neighbor in the uh, before the meeting, you know, getting session process and based on.
Maybe have a reading ordinance number two, zero, zero, dash, zero, six, two, five?
Ordinance number two, zero, three, zero, dash, zero, six, two, five. An ordinance of the city council, city of Sheldon, Washington. Annexing certain property located within the city of Sheldon, suburban area, into the city of Sheldon, suburban.
Thank you, Donna, do we have a motion?
Mister Mayor, move to forward ordinance number two, zero, three, zero, dash, zero, six, two, five to the council's action agenda. For the September second, twenty twenty five, meeting for further consideration.
Right, council, questions or comments?
I also have on camera, did briefly mention that uh. I was looking over the ordinance again, there's a minor discrepancy in one of the attachments. That's already corrected and final version, you'll see on the second is correct. Comments or questions?
All right, we have a motion in a second to forward ordinance number two, zero, three, zero, dash, zero, six, two, five. Zero, six, two, five to the council action in the September second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries, public hearings closed. We're back at a regular meeting. On to our action agenda now, uh, first Assistant Public Works Director, Aaron, next, at the Civic Center rotating art gallery.
This is a great piece here, um, I did do a lot of work on this, this is actually Jordan, um, uh, who's on a low deserve vacation. Um, as you know, we do the rotating art gallery out here, there was a call to artists that was uh sent out. Previously, earlier in the year, the deadline was submitted with July eleventh. Uh, at that time, um, the Sheldon Arts Commission met on July fifteenth to basically review the art and make recommendations. And hence why we're here in front of you this evening, you'd like to proceed with this um. Uh, and uh approve the artists that have been identified, if you look through the pictures, it's just beautiful, a lot of them. They're all gorgeous, um, and I I really is a positive thing out here, I really turn myself while I'm living. So what we're asking is if indeed uh the council will approve this, uh, they will place their art on September second. Um, and that will run through November twenty eight, twenty eighth of this year. So if there's any questions or comments, please. So.
Right, Donna, anyone have a public comment?
No.
Aaron, do we have a motion?
Mister Mayor, move to approve Sheldon Arts Commission's recommendations for placement in the civic center rotating art gallery.
Right, comments or questions? Thank you, Aaron, presenting, um. Yeah, it's great to see people walk by and stop, everybody walks by, they pay their bill, stop, look at all those, all those pictures, all those, that's great.
Very contact.
Right, now, we have motion in a second to approve the art commission's recommendations for placement in Civic Center rotating art gallery. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. All right, our last items, also, Aaron.
I'll shut up then. So this is related to the the initial issue that I brought forward to you, we talked about since the last council meeting. Uh, I told you on the initial item that was talked about that we have adequate budget to cover everything. This is a particular contract with uh Genetek, um, which is gonna be our security provider. As far as the software as well as the hardware. Um, again, pretty innovative stuff, I'm not gonna go into great detail about every security measure that's out there. Um, but there are some really positive things with our cameras, uh, access cards, those kinds of things. Moving gates, those kinds of things. So what this is, is basically a contract with Genetek. And the reason why you're seeing this first before the actual project is because of coordination. You basically need to get it constructed and then Genetek's going in after it's constructed. Place all of the units as well as the wire, run the wire, and then they're gonna train us on how to use it. So um, that's what's in front of you here for approximately fifty nine thousand dollars. Again, that was calculated in the cost and the budget that we have. Yes, division budget to move forward with this.
Any other public comment, Donna?
No, Mister Mayor.
They were reading, please.
Resolution number one, three, nine, two, dash, seven, two, five. A resolution of the council of the city of Sheldon, Washington. Authorizing the city manager to execute amendment number two, five, dash, zero, one, three, dash, C S A. The convert of security for the placement, programming, missioning and testing of the Genetec security system. Associated equipment in support of this civic center police secure security fencing project.
Thank you, Donna, do we have a motion?
Mister Mayor, move to adopt resolution number one, three, nine, two, dash, zero, seven, two, five as written.
All right, comments? I think I had Mark, but I think I forgot the answer, so I'll ask you, are we, so. We have a safe place for people to make transfers to buy a car, they can meet here and be on camera somewhere. We used to have it over here, right? So we're gonna have to move it, do we have any plans to put one out front here maybe?
I think we saw the signs, we can certainly add those, we don't have camera coverage necessarily, but. With the proximity to this department and.
So like somebody wants to buy something they see online, they say, hey, well, let me meet you at the civic center in this spot number one. And you'll be on camera, so. When I I actually bought a car, Lacy from my son, and we did that in the Lacy Police Department, there were two cameras there and says. You're being recorded and seen.
Yeah, thanks, I sold four wheelers, so going to Jacome Mall trying to make that happen. And also understand, we do have an additional, I'm not saying that we're gonna pay for it through this, but we do have additional. Two hundred and fifty thousand that Mark got for us to do security improvements to this building and other areas.
That'd be nice to be under consideration, something like that, so.
Absolutely.
All right, any other comments? We have a motion in a second to adopt residence number one, three, nine, two, dash, zero, seven, two, five as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Whoa, all right. Your report tonight.
Um, just a couple of things, I'm I'm rearranging some briefings um for for next week because of some um. Calendar conflicts, I want to make sure I get these scheduled with council because we're starting to refine budget and get into some. Uh, a place where we can provide council with with some more information and get correction from you prior to uh coming back in September in a study session. And it's really a really condensed timeline and it's really condensed because of some of the staffing chiefs that we've had in the finance department. So I really appreciate Terry and the whole team in finance, working through that. Um, department directors and all their staff, they they engage in this, it's 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 a lift when you're doing everything day to day to getting together your annual budget. So uh, times like this really, you know, really makes me appreciate the time and effort our staff put in. We just finished up the movies in the park series, unfortunately, Friday it rained, moved it inside, but it was successful series. Um, national night out, I'm sorry, I wasn't there for that, I know the attendance wasn't wasn't great, but it was kind of our first consolidated event. We're hoping to build upon that, I appreciate the council being active in that, all the departments engaging with that too, with our partners, central decent fire. I think that 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 just allows us the opportunity to communicate with our community, um, educate them on what we're doing. Let them know that we're people down here, right? And not locked in the walls here and robots doing work, real people doing work down here, chugging the rain, doing a great job. So really proud of these efforts throughout just this summer, looking forward to working through our uh, for our budget process and. Boy, we're working on twenty twenty six already, folks, so it's a, it's right around the corner, so it's kind of scary how fast it's coming up on us. But looking forward to, ready to, ready to move in that direction.
I think we need to give a couple of practice days for our police because they got beaten by the fire department. Sorry.
Okay. They're out shooting hoops at midnight, you should see.
Right, is there any other comments?
I thought it was an engaging night out and it was actually really fun and I was able to. Save my egg with council member uh Saps. He's done, so it was, it was, it was really fun and I hope people attend that more and and see how much training and expertise that the police have and the fire has. And that everyone that all the departments share and all the equipment that the city has. And so many things that the city does that makes the quality of live living in Sheldon really worth it. So I really hope that the the public can help us out and actually go see and check out all the different things, the great things that our staff does um for the whole community.
Yeah, that was great, I, do we still have shirts available to be purchased for the K nine program?
Yes, we do.
So if anybody would like a, like a shirt, they got a dog on the back, some were in the front, I bought like five of them, but I haven't worn one yet. So contact the police department. Um, do we have anybody special there?
Project downs.
Project downs. So, all right, any new additions or discussion? Right, then this study, so we have, our next meeting is Tuesday, the the second, twenty twenty five, six P M. Which will be our city clerk's last meeting. And uh, we'll have study session Tuesday, August twenty sixth at six P M. This meeting is adjourned at seven forty, six P M.